The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, December 2nd, 2019, 7:00 PM. We'll begin with the pledge. If you will all stand, Councilman Cox will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any presentations or public hearings scheduled for this evening, so I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve November 18th, 2019, regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. They pass. Announcements and reports. Does anybody have anything to report this evening?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Back on November 21st, I attended the Committee of Aging Monthly Meeting. It was a little bit delayed this year, this month. There was a report on their craft fair that they had had earlier in the month. It was again, a very successful event. The overall proceeds, plus the proceeds just on their quilt raffle, that all goes to dial a ride. And they had 85 people signed up for Thanksgiving dinners, including those who would be dining both at the center and the home deliveries. So I'm sure that was a success as well.
Great. Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have anything to report tonight? All right, moving on. Appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments or reappointments tonight? Okay, fast meeting. Town Attorney, do we have a report from you this evening?
No.
I know, going kind of fast, aren't I? Okay, thank you for being here. On to the report of the town manager, Mr. Lee.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of items, the first of which is the Plan of Conservation and Development Update. The Planning and Zoning Commission recently updated the Plan of Conservation and Development. Their work on this plan started more than a year ago.
Excuse me?
State law requires Connecticut municipalities to update the P O C D every 10 years. Town Planner Garrett Daigle is here this evening to give a presentation of the 2019 Plan of Conservation and Development. He put a small PowerPoint presentation together and I'd like to turn it over to Garrett.
Thank you. Hi Garrett.
Hi Kathy. Good evening, everyone. So as Robert said, I'll be presenting on the 2019 Plan of Conservation and Development. The Planning and Zoning Commission adopted it at their November 12th meeting, and it'll be effective December 7th, which is a Saturday, so we'll end Friday afternoon on the 2009 Plan of Conservation and start Monday in 2019. As Robert said, the plan is governed by state statute 8-23. It has to be updated, reviewed and updated by the Planning and Zoning Commission every 10 years. And the goal is to serve as a statement of policies, goals and standards for the physical and economic development of the town. And establishes guidelines and recommendations for development of the land in the town, as well as informing the budget and capital improvements. Just a little bit of background, so to start off, the plan talks about population trends and data that relates to the town and how that relates to what the budget would have to deal with and what regulations might have to be amended to meet those needs. Just a little bit of history, as everyone is familiar, the growth of population spiked in the 50s and 60s post-World War II. However, the population is expected to remain fairly constant between 17,000 and 18,000 over the next 20 years, as the rate of births and deaths pretty much equalize and we end up with a fairly stable population instead of spikes of growth and decrease. We also have an aging population in the state. It's not just Plainville, it's the entire state. However, the median age in Plainville 10 years ago was 41.9 years old and is expected to increase to 44.7 by 2040. And like I said, population is fairly steady. The average household decreased from a high of 3.38 in the 1960s down to 2.32 people per household in 2010. All right. Just to go over some of the information about the town more, we have predominantly single-family housing in town. It's about 60%. And the median sale price is about $200,000. That's fairly in line with neighboring communities. We do only have 6.7% of housing that's deemed affordable, and that is 80, people making 80% of the median income in Plainville are spending 30% or less on housing, which 30% is the marker of how much you should be spending. Affordable housing is 80% less than the median income. That does leave the town open to affordable housing appeals action through 830G. That is where a developer can come in under that statute and disregard the zoning regulations. However, it has not been common that a developer has targeted Plainville. They generally target other towns. That might be due to connectivity to public transport and items like that of why we haven't really had that. I think it's been a long time, decades, since there was an affordable housing appeal process in town. In terms of economics of the town, Plainville's doing very well. We have about 9,730 jobs in 2017, which is lower than the surrounding towns, but per household, it's higher. It's about 1.21. And businesses make up 20.6% of the tax base. Again, it's not, it doesn't seem super high, but we come in only second to Farmington and our neighboring communities of Southington, New Britain, Bristol and Farmington. So Plainville's actually doing fairly well in terms of jobs in the area. Moving on to development of existing land in town, as I stated, we have predominantly single-family housing, which makes up about 42% of the developed land in town, but only about 32% of the total town, moving down. Businesses make up 14% of the total land in town. Open space comprises 9% currently. Community and institutional facilities, that includes churches, town hall, police station, items like that, is only about 4%, as those are tax exempt. That's an important number to remember. And then we have about 18% of the land is, we deemed it as other, that includes roads, the airport, the quarries and farming properties. And then of the remaining land, there's about 23% that is vacant and not committed for development at this time. So Plainville's fairly up there in terms of development. We are a small town with a high population comparatively, so it's not unheard of for us to have that much development and vacant space. Now, how the rest of the plan works, sorry. We conducted a few surveys of the community when we started the process. We had a community survey that was online and also available at the library and senior center for, to ensure that everyone was able to take the survey. We had about 250 responses, which is fairly good, considering that was voluntary and we didn't go knocking on doors to get answers like the census. We also conducted a survey of board and commission members. I believe the town council may have included that. It was a while ago at this point. And we had about 40 people respond to that. And we also interviewed all the department heads in town based on their experience with town facilities and how they see the town, challenges for the town in the coming decades. The plan is broken down into three themes. We've got conservation-related issues, development-related issues and infrastructure-related issues. In terms of conservation, as I stated before, we have about 11% land committed for open space. We have more than that as just plain vacant that most likely will not be developed, but it's currently not protected, so the potential is there. Some of the things the plan is encouraging and that will result in zoning regulation changes will be encouraging of planting of native trees and non-invasive species. It's become fairly common in the past 10 years for businesses to plant, low, grow decorative trees so that you can still see their business from the road, but the intent of the trees is to mitigate the urban heat island effect with pavement and shading to reduce heat island. One of the additional aspects is that should open space become available along some corridors, the town should strive to acquire that space either through requesting donation or land acquisition fund. We have a few corridors that were identified, primarily the Paquale River Channel, which the town owns a majority of open space around there, the Quinnipiac River, the Meta Comet Ridge Corridor. We call that the PQR system. The Meta Comet Ridge is currently maintained by Connecticut Forest and Park, which is a nonprofit, and their goal is to have a good chunk of the trail on publicly owned land. It's currently on private, which opens it up to development and it's concerning. So Connecticut Forest and Park is working with the state and the federal government in order to obtain grant funds to purchase property, but most of the time, people want you to purchase the whole property. They can't just purchase a small portion for the trail. So it is generally slow, but we can work with Connecticut Forest and Park to preserve the trail. Almost the entirety of the trail in Plainville is on private property. We also identify the Farmington Canal Greenway, and it will connect to open space, which meets the goals of the plan. And these trails and open space corridors would promote sustainability and efficient use of resources by making sure that open space is located where people can access it. People don't need to go out of their way to access these areas. All right. We also looked at the downtown area. We identified a core area of about a quarter mile, as that's deemed as walkable in under five minutes. And then there's a fringe area, which is a half mile out, which is about 10 minutes, which is about the maximum people would walk before they start electing to get in their car and driving. The goal is to promote active uses in downtown, so that would mean revising our regulations to limit the use of offices and various uses that people don't go in on a whim. Retail and restaurants, people will stop in at shops if they see something in the window. People will drive by and see a restaurant and want to go there on a later night or go restaurant to restaurant for appetizers or something like that, which encourages foot traffic in the downtown area and would benefit businesses. One of the items identified in the plan is to divide the downtown area, which is currently zoned, Central Commercial, into two zones. It would be a core downtown area and a fringe downtown area. The goal of the fringe would be to allow multifamily housing. We currently allow multifamily with commercial on the bottom. We haven't seen that regulation used very much, but there is a demand for multifamily housing in town, given the qualities of the town. It's a desirable area to live, but unfortunately, many people aren't able to find housing. And additionally, to increase foot traffic would be allow outdoor dining. I believe that might have to be something that we work with the town council on, as the sidewalks are owned by the town, they're not privately owned. One of the key traits of the plan that's different from previous plans is it identifies using a planned development district. This is something that's used fairly commonly throughout the state. West Hartford is famous for using it almost exclusively. It's essentially a new zone. The property has to be identified in the plan. In the plan, we identified the White Oak property adjacent to town hall, the Tyler Farms property and the Parsons Buick property as being sites with unique characteristics that would lend themselves to this planned development district. Essentially, an applicant would come in, they would make their own zoning regulation with a master plan for development, and the Planning and Zoning Commission would review that. They'd have an informal discussion and work with the developer to come to an agreement of what should go there. The goal is that the zone change aspect of this gives the Planning and Zoning Commission legislative authority, where they normally would only have to go by their regulations. For example, if a property, if a developer comes in with a development that meets the zoning regulations, the commission has little say as that they set out their regulations and then things are built. This would be creating a new regulation for this developer to build. It would be limited to the site that they choose and only what zone is changed. Zone changes also require third-party review for the planned development district, and it would also notify everyone in the area that this was happening, as everyone within 200 feet has to be notified of a zone change. As I spoke about residential development, predominantly single-family, it is predominantly higher density residential, and we define high density as over three units per acre, which is a majority of the zoning in Plainville. We have the R, R10, R11, R12, R15, R20 and R40, where the numbers correlate to 1,000 square feet per living unit. The majority of the housing is pre-1960s and may need rehabilitation expansion to reflect housing needs and desires, so it might involve looking at the zoning regulations for certain areas where there's not much room based on the current zoning setbacks to develop. However, there is a diverse base of housing, which means many people are able to find housing when it becomes available in town. It ranges all the way from small lots, less than a quarter acre, to lots of an acre or more, allowing for diversity of people are able to live in town. Looking at community facilities, as I stated, department heads were interviewed to determine what they see as the needs of the town facilities going forward in the next few decades. Many of the buildings are currently adequate, but some will need rehabilitation expansion over the next few decades. Additionally, efficiencies may be realized through the assessment of how existing space is utilized and how facilities can be reconfigured. There's a chart in the Plan of Conservation and Development, which identifies a facility, identifies if it is adequate or inadequate for the town's needs and lists some of the reasons why it may be inadequate or some of the things that may make it adequate. Moving on to transportation. This looks at identifying the sidewalks and the transportation networks in town. Obviously, there's roads everywhere. Some of them are state-owned, but the majority are town-owned. It advocates for the continued maintenance of existing facilities, which the town council does through the bond program. Also advocating for improvements on the state roads to alleviate congestion. As we know, 177 has many traffic issues and it's only a two-lane road for the most part, and there's nowhere really for the road to go. There may be some options with a traffic study to make some changes and alleviate traffic to better suit the town. Also work with the DOT to identify effective public transit routes. DOT did this recently while the plan was in process. They were looking at some areas in town and the neighboring towns to identify new bus routes to give access to transportation to more people. Not everyone depends on a car for travel, and the state advocates for buses. Currently, there's some overlap with the Fast Track and the existing CT Transit Network in town. The majority of riders currently stop off in Connecticut Commons and pick up the bus at the Bristol Town Line. I know the buses generally look empty in town, but the goal would be that if more efficient routes were made, such as connecting to Southington and to Tuxus, more people might be using the public transportation facilities. Additionally, it looks at evaluating opportunities to improve sidewalk connectivity, as that is part of complete streets policy that the state has. And as I stated before, working with stakeholders for completion of trail networks, such as Connecticut Forest and Park for the Meta Comet Ridge Trail. Utilities, as you can see on this map, everything in green is serviced by or can be serviced by Plainville's existing sewer system. We're required by DEP to identify areas for sewer expansion and areas where sewers will not be expanded. The areas where it will not be expanded is this section on the North Mountain, as the density currently, which is one acre zoning, would not be practical to install a sewer line down, from there down to the rest of the town. It would not be economically feasible, and so we identify it as having a septic area. And then this section on the southern portion of town is where the quarry is and where Tilcon and the Water Company land is. Additionally, the plan calls for the town to advocate to make sure that utilities meet the requirements of the town, such as internet access, ensure that electricity facilities are up to standard and items like that. All right. So last part of the plan is implementation. So how do we get, how do we establish these goals and how do we complete these goals? So there's a timeline for long and short-term goals. The plan is to review the goals on a regular basis, either quarterly or yearly, to ensure that the town is making progress on the goals that they established. Encourage town organizations to use the P O C D. It is a guiding document for town boards and commissions for policy and for planning. And we will update and add regulations as identified in the Plan of Conservation and Development to address needs and trends. And that's about it. Public copies of the plan are available in my office, the town clerk's office, and they will be available at the library for people to look. You are able to purchase them through the Freedom of Information Act. We can get you a hard copy, and it's also available on the town website and on the Planning and Economic Development webpage. Questions?
Okay. Any questions regarding the plan? Sure.
Yes.
But after I turn my microphone on, I will ask it. I just noticed with the sewer map that the Preventure-D'Amico Drive area is not currently serviced by sewers. Is there a reason? Is it more of a neighborhood reason? Is it that that doesn't?
It may have to deal with topography.
Okay.
There's some areas of town where it pitches down from where the sewer line is, or the sewer line is too elevated to get the pitch from the houses to connect to the sewer. It could be an option to install pump stations. It's not identified as being an avoidance area. Should the need arise, such as multiple septic systems failing, there's not being enough land area to install new stuff in.
I'm just curious, because it does stand out on that map.
Right.
You know, it's pretty much all green, except for that one, you know, Councilman Underwood may have a couple of thoughts on that as well, but.
Right.
About 10 years ago, I did leach fields. Actually, it was more than 10, it was like almost 20 years ago. It cost me $8,000. I had to go down seven feet below the septic tank itself. It was very expensive. But I would think that the cost of public sewers in that area would be astronomically high to residents at this point in time.
Right, at this time.
Yes. I think it'd be cost prohibitive, quite honestly.
Right.
Thank you.
So the green area is essentially shown as 200 feet out from existing sewer lines in town.
Okay.
There are some houses that are on sewer lines that still have septic systems, and they'll just connect when their septic system fails.
I will tell you this, a neighbor of mine had to put leach fields in, $30,000 to put leach fields in. So, quite high.
They're fairly expensive.
Again, I can't imagine what it would cost to hook up to a sewer line in that area at this time, with costs as high as they are.
Right.
Interesting. Any other comments or questions about Garrett's presentation?
I just have one. You were talking about zoning the Tyler property.
Mm-hmm.
And you said something about the planning and zoning, having the responsibility of making the decisions as they go along in accordance with the recommendations from a contractor?
Yes.
What, how much of the public, how much public input will we have on that?
It is a public hearing. It's a public process. The.
Before the permits are acquired.
Right. So they will apply for a planned development district application, which will involve first, an informal discussion with the Planning and Zoning Commission to kind of understand what the developer's goals is, and the Planning and Zoning Commission can also give their input on what they think works and doesn't work with the proposal. The recommendation is to have the plan also reviewed by a third party at the expense of the developer to ensure that everything works with the existing area and then with traffic patterns and things like that. And then a public hearing will be scheduled, and people within 200 feet will be notified by certified mail, certificate of mailing. And there will be a public hearing, it'll be noticed in the papers.
See, my only concern with that is, I think it was about 10 years ago, Walmart wanted to build a building on Unionville Avenue and Northwest Drive.
Right.
And they tried to squeeze it in there under some kind of a zoning permit that would have given them the permission to do that. I was part of a group of people that fought it adamantly, only because, not because I, not to say it was because it was in my backyard, it was because of the traffic situation, number one. And I gotta tell you, getting out of, getting out of Unionville, getting onto Unionville Avenue right now from Preventure Lane, sometimes could take me as much as 15 to 20 minutes.
Right.
And I gotta be honest with you, when I do proceed, I gun it. I mean, I leave rubber on the road so I can get out into the roadway there to get to where I'm going. So my biggest concern would be whether or not it would be the right thing for the housing in the area. In other words, they want to put a big 80,000 square foot Walmart into a residential neighborhood. You want it to mix the two. And that concerns me that we would give the planning and zoning that much.
Right. So there are recommendations in the plan for each site that is identified, and for the Tyler Farms property, under possible approach, commercial or retail development on this site would not be appropriate, although office development could be compatible with adjacent uses. So currently, the properties zoned are 20, which is half-acre, single-family lots. I think it's around, it could be 80, 90, single-family homes. That's unlikely, given the cost of development. And so it looks at an alternative process to figure something else out. I know that the property owner advocated to have it added, and with his sort of high-level discussions with DOT, he'd be required, he'd most likely be required to add a light on Unionville Ave. It'd have to be coordinated with the other lights on Unionville Ave to prevent traffic from backing up even further. That goes along with the lines of that the town should advocate with DOT for improvements to state roads, because Unionville Ave is very congested, and the problem is there's nowhere for it to go either, because the state has no right-of-way, not enough right-of-way on either side of the properties in order to add lanes to make traffic move more quickly through that area.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just a quick question, Garrett. Now, because this is in the plan, the planned development districts, and because three sites are named, because as I understand it, the sites have to be named in a municipality's plan.
They do.
Yeah. But is it mean, because the plan is now adopted, so it means that this process could technically begin?
Yes.
Yeah. Just wanted to confirm that.
Yes. As I stated, it'll be, any sort of development of this kind would be publicly noticed, there'd be signs along Unionville Ave, it'd also be published in the paper, per the standard requirements of the state.
And obviously, it would have to go through the appropriate steps.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good questions. Anybody else have anything? Okay, thank you so much for bringing us up to speed. We appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you, Garrett.
You know, one thing about the town of Plainville is it's the fifth smallest town area-wise in the state of Connecticut. And I know that Christopher can name the four towns that are smaller than Plainville, right?
I think I know two. I don't know the four. I know two.
Union, right?
I'm pretty sure Derby is.
Derby and Ansonia, New London and Windsor Locks.
Yeah, I would've said like East Windsor.
So anyhow. The next item I have is the Debt Management Plan Update. The town is preparing to issue $6 million in general obligation bonds next May, as we reported at the last meeting, for the final phase of the Wheeler School project. Before this occurs, the town will seek what's known as a rating assessment from Standard and Poor's, S&amp;P. The town's current rating, which was done several years ago, is AA+. This is one notch under AAA rating, which is the highest rating a town can receive. S&amp;P evaluates several major factors before determining the assigning of a rating. The higher the rating, the more secure the investment for those who want to buy bonds, the lower the interest rate bid, and the less interest cost to be paid by the town. The major factors in determining a rating, there's five major factors. First is what's known as management practices, makes up about 25%, which basically is the fiscal discipline and ability to plan, monitor and manage government finances. The second area that they look at is the economy and demographics, that makes up about 30% of their decision, which is looking basically at the unemployment rate and housing values, as well as, there are some income values in there as well, what people can afford to pay. Third is financial performance, that's another 25%, which is basically fund balance levels and budgetary discipline. Fourth is debt management, that's about 10% of the decision-making process, which is the debt as a percentage of the budget and debt as a percentage of the grand list. And then there's long-term liabilities, another 10%, which is pension and what's known as other post-employment benefits, basically retirement healthcare. We don't have a lot of retirement healthcare benefits in Plainville, and our pension liabilities, we're funded somewhere in the low 80s, so we're in pretty good shape in terms of funding of our pension. You know, so there are things of these five items that I just listed, there are things we can control and there's things we can't control. So we do pretty good on the things we can control and the things we can't control, such as. such as, you know, demographics are things that I think we've done pretty good on, you know, I think we're in pretty decent shape, considering we're one notch under, you know, AAA. So, you know, certainly where the town is in pretty good shape in terms of, at least the opinion of S&amp;P, and I anticipate that we'll be able to, at the very least, maintain that rating in May, assuming that no major changes occur between now and then. And, you know, and we could always keep our fingers crossed with regards to perhaps an upgrade, although, you know, that would be somewhat difficult, but we'll see. Our current debt service, budgeted for fiscal year '20, is $4,724,233. However, the budget includes the use of debt management funds, resulting in a net debt service amount of $4.4 million. The $4.4 million amount, you know, has been maintained by several years, and it's been a goal of the town council. So that, it's the $4.4 million level that, or goal, that we've been, you know, trying to attain going forward. Some years, we're below the 4.4, and when we're above the 4.4, we've saved up some dollars to be used to bring us back to that level. According to the latest financial projections, the $6 million borrowing will impact the fiscal year '21 budget. And that's fiscal year '21, which is, you know, when we start budgeting for next year. And that impact will be, in the first year, $495,000. This assumes a 3.25% interest rate, which is very conservative at this time. You know, if we were to borrow today, our interest rate would probably be about 2.3%. So things would have to go fairly far south between now and May, in order to, you know, to reach that 3.25%. So, that is a conservative interest rate for this analysis. Additionally, because there is debt that is being retired or paid off this year, the net impact to next year's budget, although with a $495,000 increase, the net impact to next year's budget will be actually a decrease of $323,000 from the current year's budget. So that's just $30,000, $30,350 above the $4.4 million goal. So what that means is, all things being equal, and if the interest rate comes in a little bit lower, that $30,000 amount above the $4.4 million would actually decrease, but anything above the $4.4 million we would use from the debt management fund. Currently, the debt management fund has approximately $430,000 in it. We expect that there'll be about $430,000 in the debt management fund at the end of this fiscal year. Additionally, the $5 million road bond, too, approved last month, is expected to impact the town budget in fiscal year '22. According to the latest financial projections, the net impact to the budget will be a minus $87,625, bringing the annual payments below the $4.4 million goal by almost $60,000. Further decreases in the debt service line item will occur in fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '25, allowing for additional debt to be incurred and still stay, and still stay below the $4.4 million goal. This would allow the town to consider addressing improvements, other improvements, such as the middle school, and I know that there's been some discussion with regards to, you know, sidewalks as well. Is there any questions with regards to debt management? We will be putting this particular analysis up on the webpage. I know there's a couple of the slides had a lot of detail with regards to numbers, they're basically difficult to read until you really put them down in front of you and go through them, you know, fairly, it takes me a while to get through some of them, so I can imagine other people looking at it as well. But, we're in pretty decent shape, we've stayed on our goal, even with the $5 million road bond, too, which is what we, you know, which we touted as, you know, going into it. And, you know, this analysis just, you know, kind of demonstrates how it's going to work out going forward.
Just one comment, Robert. I appreciate that you mentioned a sidewalk program, because we had, you know, I'd spoken to you about it, and so several of our folks have spoken to residents about the condition of sidewalks generally, and some parts of the town are far worse than others, of course. You know, they're older, they're in older subdivisions, they have, they have a tension that needs to be taken care of. So, I think it's looking promising that, as we start to move forward, doing an assessment of the sidewalks, and developing a program to try and start doing some, you know, putting some substantial monies into that, this actually looks very promising, that we could take care of a lot of that, without having a negative impact on, you know, our annual tax rate. So, that's good to see.
Well, it is important for us to keep our infrastructure in good working order, and it improves property values, you know, the roads being paved, you know, improving the sidewalks, keeping our municipal buildings and schools in good shape. These are all reasons why people want to move to Plainville, and are willing to pay, you know, and improve our housing, you know, values, so that, you know, people will have more, more value in their, in their property.
Sure. And some of the areas where I had spoken to people, they were very forthright about, they thought the town did a good job, everything is being taken care of, all of that, and they agreed that the roads are looking wonderful. And they take pride in their own property, you know, they make sure their houses are in good, good order, and their yards are in good shape, and then there's a crumbling sidewalk in front of their house. So, you know, I think we, it's certainly our obligation to take care of some of the things that we can, to help keep those neighborhoods, as nice as the people that live in them would like them to be.
And we've included, you know, we've included requests for sidewalk repairs in the capital budget, and the capital budget's been tight over the last, you know, 10 years or so, and continues to be tight. And, but, but because we've managed our debt the way we have, it does provide us an opportunity to do that without impacting the general fund, so to speak.
Yeah, exactly. I think that's, that's a very promising outlook, that we're going to be able to do a major look at, at all the sidewalks, at least the ones that we know are from the older subdivisions that are really pretty much in tough shape. And hopefully, you know, with that, with a look at our debt management, we'll be able to do something significant.
And we hope to be able to propose something with the budget next year, that will, hopefully the council can, you know, decide if that's the direction you want to go.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item I have is the Wheeler School Project update. Was there anybody else who had any questions about that? Okay, sorry. The Wheeler School Project update. The Wheeler School renovation project is currently running ahead of schedule and under budget. We've reported that. Scott Colby, who was the staff person who has attended the majority, if not all, of the Capital Projects Building Committee meetings, is here this evening to give an update on the project, and I know he has a short PowerPoint presentation as well. I'd like to turn it over to Scott to give his presentation.
There's a lot of pictures in this PowerPoint, so. Just to provide a brief update as to how we got where we are today, back in June of 2017, we held a school project referendum, and the amount that was approved was $23,515,000. And at the time, the project was expected to be completed in March of 2020. And so where we are right now is, we're looking at a projected construction cost of about $18.9 million, with a projected total project cost of $22.2 million. That will include not only the construction costs, but the architectural fees, and any of the, you know, change orders that occurred during that time as well. Right now, the owner's contingency sits at about $412,000, and the construction manager contingency sits at $277,000, for a total contingency balance of $689,000. And so for the project initially, we started at about a, it was a 5% contingency, which sat a little over a million dollars. We've only used 41% of that to date. If you recall, the project referendum amount was for $23.1 million, but the state approved the budget at $22.8 million. So we're looking about, almost $600,000 under budget right now, with the state-approved budget, and $938,000 under budget of what was approved during the referendum. So currently, work is being done in Phase 3 of the project, which consists of the music room, the staff lounge, the computer room, a guidance office, and two pre-K classrooms. And, as you recall, the project is now ahead of schedule, it's expected to be completed by Christmas break, that will include all of those rooms in Phase 3. They'll have some minor punchless items that'll be completed throughout, you know, the weeks after that, and then any additional site work would be completed in the spring, they would bring back the site work contractor. So if you look at the chart at the bottom, if you look at all the phases, as it was a multi-phase project, Phase 1, Phase 1A are both at 100% complete, as well as the additional corridor. Site work sits at about 97% complete, 99% complete for Phase 2, 2A, 2B, and those are just the minor punchless items that need to be completed. And then Phase 3 sits at about 70%, that was as a few weeks ago, it's probably closer to 80% now. And so the way that the project was phased out was, everything that you see in green was completed first, that was completed over last winter, and then turned back over to the school, they then started working on the next phase, which consisted of the darker blue, and then they started working on the lighter blue, the pink, and the purple. The orange section is what they're currently working on now, and they're working their way down, so they'll have the pre-K classrooms up here that they'll turn over within the next few weeks. And then as they, as they finish up each classroom moving down, they'll turn it over to the school. The facilities department is going to start moving in teachers' items as of next week, with furniture to be moved in the week before Christmas and during the Christmas break. And so a general, just some general information, a temporary certificate of occupancy was received on August 30th for Phase 2, 2A, 2B, and the school opened on time as scheduled for September 3rd. The site work is substantially complete, the softball field plantings were completed around the end of September. The site work contractors will be returning in the spring to restore any damages throughout the winter for work that wasn't fully grown during that time. The playgrounds are fully complete in the three areas, including the pre-K area, and then they will finish the site work area for where any of the storage trailers and the construction manager trailers were located, as well as some of the Phase 3 site work in the spring. Phase 1 is fully complete, with no remaining punchless items, all boilers and mechanical equipment is complete. The connecting corridor that links Phase 1 to Phase 2 is complete as well. Phase 2A, the kitchen, the cafeteria, the media center, and the art room, substantially complete, with just minor punchless items, and it's just simple things, it's touching up some paint, or repairing a small area on the floor, or maybe it's just a dirty, scuffed-up ceiling tile that they just have to replace. Phase 2B, the gym, also same thing, minor punchless items, it's just some of the line striping on the floor just needs to be corrected. And then for Phase 3, the two pre-K classrooms, I'll show you some photos of some before-and-after photos, it's just, really just finalizing some of the electrical equipment, and putting in some of the cabinetry, with a bulk of the items already being completed. And so, some of the photos that I have here, the first one that you see with the double doors, that was the old entrance for Wheeler School off of Cleveland Memorial Ave, and that is now a security vestibule, as the new entrance was located to the area where the parking lot is located. And then as you see, some of these areas, the top right corner, that's one of the pre-K classrooms as of two weeks ago, so it has protective coating on the floor right now to protect the finalized floor. The ceiling grid is already in place, and those boxes are removed, all the cabinetry is done in those rooms. In the bottom areas, those are framing in the guidance area, the computer room, and the music rooms, and those are substantially complete as well. The ceiling tiles are already in place, and they're starting to put up the walls as well. And so during the summer, they had a bulk of their site work that was being completed. This consisted of all of the fields around the school, as well as the parking lots, and this is just some of the photos as they were doing a lot of their demolition work out there during that time. And so the site work consisted of a new parking lot, repaving of the walkways, of the bus loop, of an asphalt path around the softball field, and then redoing the pre-K playground, as well as the two additional playgrounds that they have. So the top photo right now shows the completed softball field, the grass is growing there, that was as a few weeks ago, now it's probably covered in snow. And then you have the new Wheeler Elementary School entrance. I'll show you what the interior looks like as well, once they go inside, you'll see the new administrative offices, and then you have the new and improved parking lot, which has a more and improved design to allow for student pickup and drop-off. And so all of the site work has been completed, the only areas that they'll need to complete right now would be the areas adjacent to Cleveland Memorial Ave, right up here. They just have some storage containers there right now, that they'll come back in the spring, they'll replant the grass and any plantings that they have to in that area, and anything that did not grow or come through before the winter. So during the summer, they were also working on the courtyard, as well as the additional connecting corridor, and this is just some of the pictures showing the work that was going on in the early parts of summer. And this is just a site plan of what the courtyard is to look like. It is a, has a mixed use, it has learning centers, as well as seating areas, they have areas for students to plant their own plantings, as well as display any projects that they do out there as well. And I have a completed photo of that courtyard and the connecting corridor. And these were completed right before the end of summer, that the way the students were able to use this during the fall. And this is the framing of the office area and the interior vestibule for the new entrance. And here's what everything looks like completed. So the first one that you see with the double doors, that would be the security vestibule that you would come through, and if you were to walk through those double doors, that wood wall paneling is what you would see, and it would link up the hallways right there. And then you have the new administrative office area. And we also have the before and after of some of the Phase 3 exterior, there's a lot of site work, the windows weren't put in, as well as some of the trimming on the left side, but on the right side, they still have some of the security barricades up right now, but the windows are all in, the doors are in, the trimming is up, the flashing is done for the roofing. Then we have a completed kitchen on the top corner, as well as the cafeteria in the bottom left. The center photo is the gymnasium, an entrance to the student bathrooms, and then the media center. And these were all completed at the end of summer. And the last slide I have is a renovated classroom, as well as a hallway. And that concludes the presentation. If there are any questions?
Looks great. Is the Board of Ed planning to provide a tour once everything is all, you know, after they return and everything is all finished? Will we be able to go in for a tour to see the final product?
Yes, they're looking to host a few nights of an open house during Christmas break, to allow parents to come in and see where the children would be able to go, because they're going to be bringing back the students from Linden School as well during this time, so they're going to be able to get a tour of the new school and the layout. So we can keep you posted as to the dates that they are going to be doing these tours.
That'd be great. I'd love to see it. We saw one last winter sometime, and they had only done the first section. So it'd be interesting to see how it all has come together. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Good news.
Thank you.
The next item I have is land donation, Oakland Developers. Earlier this year, Oakland Developers LLC received approval for a three-lot subdivision on a two-acre parcel on Stillwell Drive. As part of the approval process, the Planning and Zoning Commission required that 0.94 acres be given to the town for open space. This land is located adjacent to the Testa Wildlife Area, which is also owned by the town. There is an item under New Business for the Town Council to accept the 0.94 acres of land for open space purposes.
Okay.
I know that Scott has a brief report on happenings, and then we're available to answer any questions you may have on either of the items we discussed, or any others.
Thank you.
So the only item I have to report on is that the Plainville Chamber of Commerce will be hosting the 27th Annual Plainville Tree Lighting Ceremony and Holiday Stroll on Friday, December 13th, at 5:30 PM. The event will kick off at the firehouse, and we'll also have a visit from Santa shortly thereafter. And there will be downtown horse and buggy rides from 5:30 to 8:00 PM, and they will also be doing specials and raffles at some of the area stores as well.
Thank you. Just one comment, Robert, regarding leaf pickup. The leaves were once again picked up, I guess, I'm guessing before all the snow came down, but, once again, they did a great job making sure the leaves were, you know, taken off the streets, and thanks to Dominic and his crew for all the work that they did. People do comment in a positive fashion about the leaf pickup, and, you know, and here we are with snow.
Yeah, we were hoping to be able to go to Wednesday, but because of the snow, you know, they had to switch over everything to the plowing, and so, you know, leaf pickup was, we always said it was weather permitting, and I think the great majority of people in town were able to get their leaves out, but I know there's a couple of people who waited to the, I heard reports that people were actually raking their leaves yesterday, so, you know.
Hmm.
We're not going to be able to pick up those leaves, but we will make arrangements for people if they want to bring them to the, to the transfer station.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, extend our thanks once again.
Will do.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments or questions for Robert or Scott? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the updates. We next have our public comment section of our meeting. During this time, we welcome the public to come to this podium tonight. Please state your name and address. You will be given three minutes to speak to the council. I have one person who signed up, John Kishlik. And after that, we'll just take anybody from the audience who wishes to speak. John?
John Kishlik, 65 Forestwood Avenue. Good evening, Town Council.
Good evening.
Robert, Scott.
Good evening.
Welcome back from the sunshine state. Glad you made it.
So am I. Glad to be home.
No, I think a lot of us are crazy to be here tonight or really like Plainville. In fact, Marilyn dragged Marilyn here today to keep me in line and keep me focused. So anyway, you know, I'm still upset about that vote on the teacher's contract from last meeting. You know, as far as I'm concerned, you have about at least seven people on that Board of Education that are, they want to give away to farm. And your three Democrats acted like you're employees of the Board of Education. And Republicans, you folded twice when you had a winning hand twice. And I got so upset that I changed my voter registration from Republican to Independent because I was really...
Again?
Yeah. I was never independent, I go to you guys. I was really disappointed in you. I thought we had some ideas and things in common. Do you know that this Board of Education is going to be asking for an increase of $950,000? And you know how hard you fought last budget for $100,000? Can you imagine what's going to happen now if you get four against 10? You're in trouble. It's just, you know. And then one other fast comment. I want all of you to think about why you think 71% of the voters did not come out and vote for the election. Just think about it. My main reason for being here tonight is another issue I had that this Town Council ignored me again. I was reading an article in a newspaper, and it reminded me that I asked you if you can publicize the town manager's performance that you had, evaluation. Nothing was done. And I have nothing against Robert. I believe he earns everything he gets, especially having to deal with you people.
Hey, hey, hey.
Maybe even needs more. So I filed a Freedom of Information to get this information. I just think the public should know. This other town had a report, and it was so great, everything about their town manager, his increase in pay, what his salary was, and that should be given to the public. You shouldn't be ashamed of your town manager and what you give him. And I have three questions in there. I won't, I won't read the questions. If Robert would like to share them with you, he could. But...
I'll share them with you when I get them back. Remember, Robert, nothing personal.
I think you deserve it all.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Please come to the podium, state your name and address. You'll have three minutes. Anybody else? Mr. Edmund?
Joel Edmund, 63 Oliver Lane. No rail, no trail, and no thank you. Perhaps I should try to explain why I wear this sign on my chest every time I attend the Plainville Town Council meetings. Realistically, its meaning represents the majority of respondents that do not want to close the gap due to the unavailability of using an abandoned railroad through town due to the fact that it is still used to service approximately three commercial businesses. The idea of rails-to-trails gap is a viable giveaway to a select few to navigate the hikers and bikers to enjoy themselves at taxpayers' expense. Unfortunately, every possibility of alternate alignments will cause hate, consternation, discontent, and loss to everyone that would become negatively affected by its invasive proximity to their valuable properties. Also, traffic on our roads that continue to accommodate increasing use. Nothing good could become of that. And once it is constructed, it will be forever at much extra cost to Plainville taxpayers, forever. When the trail was proposed to the public by mostly out-of-town people, our leaders in government, meaning state and town, were very quick to approve it going forward, stating that it would be like a shot in the arm for a local downtown business. I disagree. Hikers and bikers are already passing through town on well-maintained and striped roads and sidewalks. So I see that excuse as a zero increase in commercial activity. I am of the opinion that our little town of Plainville has become quite cluttered with housing, business, traffic, and an abundance of recreational activities. We do not need another trail to slice through it all, and especially Norton Park and the mule tow path. Enough is enough. No rail, no trail, and no thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Yes, sir?
The Hartford Current on the 20th is the, about the manager review for the town of Windsor. And I honestly, I think you're doing Mr. Lee a disfavor by not publishing what his review is. You should think about it. I mean, it's, it's good for everybody. I mean, it's, I don't see why you wouldn't do it, so. The borrowing, rates are low now, but you can get addicted to low interest rate borrowings, and it's real hard to get off of it. So keep that in mind. At some point, the rates got to go up, the federal deficit and the state deficit. Like I said, it's real easy. Easy money's good when it's low, but it's a bear to get off of it. The other thing with the development plan with the Taflon property, I'd really like to see something linked in with the trail to go through there, some type of restaurant or something. It's a real opportunity to develop semi-off center of Plainville. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Yes, Joanne.
Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. You've heard it before, I'm going to say it again, probably say it again and again. I strongly oppose alignment C and any other alignment that would negatively affect Peron Road, Pierce Street, Hemingway, Broad Street. Wait until it goes down Broad Street. Those people are going to be very, very much affected. And definitely into the park and the Mule Hall Trail. It has no business in our park. Broad Streets, when the people finally wake up on Broad Street, they're going to find their telephone poles in their living rooms. And then they will start to squawk. But nobody from Broad Street really is coming out now, but I hope they're going to hear it. I'm reminding them that they're going to get it. So I suggest that you move the trail, let the people go down Route 10. If you can't do that, go to the edge of the industrial park on Northwest Drive and go down through the back way there onto Cronk Road, up wherever you're going to go, back onto Route 10 into Southington. Why not? Why bother people? You just can't do that. And it just seems to me that alignment C, I haven't really heard why you, all of you up there, Democrats and Republicans, don't say something about the money that's being spent on alignment C. You say that you're not for it, or that you haven't made a decision. That's what I hear. You haven't made a decision. But in the meantime, $4 million, $4 million are being spent on the design. So obviously, obviously, you're for it. Otherwise, you would stop it. And why don't you stop it? Do you want that trail? Would you like it in your backyard, front yard? I don't think so. I truly don't think so. And, you know, when I find, okay, on to another subject, Wheeler School. You're building another Taj Mahal in this town. Wait until, oh, the money that's being spent. I'm not that happy about Wheeler School. And then we're going to have the middle school restoration. Then what? It's like taking the taxpayers, taking their necks, and squeezing the, you know, bejesus out of them. I can't understand, this town's nine and a half square miles, and $2 million last year the budget got raised. What's it going to be this year? Three? Already you've got $900,000 for the teacher's contract. You've got, oh, you're going to be making plans for the middle school before you know it, and you've got a lot of wrap-up on the Wheeler School. It looks like the Taj Mahal. Courtyards, this, and are the kids really learning that much more? I don't think so. I don't think so. So, anyway, to wrap it up...
Please.
I'm not happy.
Okay.
And I'll bet you there's a lot of people that are not happy, that are scared to death to come up here and say so, or write a letter. That's why they don't come out to vote. Come on, people, get off your duffs.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on, moving on. All right. We do not have any old business this evening, so we're going to move into the new business. We have a few items to take care of. Number one, please, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept the donation of .94 acres of land on Eisenhower Drive from Oakland Developers.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Do we have any other items of interest, Mr. Lee?
Just one. This Wednesday, I'll be holding my second office, open office hours at the library from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. My special guest on Wednesday will be Chief Matt Catania. So residents are invited to drop in and have a discussion. It doesn't necessarily have to involve police matters, although the chief will be there. You know, just making him available and myself available for anybody who wants to come in and talk about any subject that's of interest to them. So we invite the public to attend. It's a relaxed atmosphere and generally have a relatively fruitful discussion.
Okay.
Most of the time. If not all.
Thank you. Is there anything that anybody else wishes to bring forward?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just like to wish the Plainville High School football team the best of luck. I believe now on Wednesday in the playoff game, I believe that was pushed back due to the snow. Thanksgiving was great. I think I saw Mr. Cox there for a minute or two. It was a great game, and best of luck to the football team on Wednesday evening.
Great. Yep. Okay. Anything else from anybody? Okay. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.